Calling this meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Board Public Workshop, February 12th, 2025. Please do the roll call.
Committee member seat one is currently vacant. Committee member Lisa L. Ramey.
Present.
Committee member Ralph Rafflowitz. Committee member Todd McLendon.
Here.
Committee member Jacqueline Clifton. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to do staff. Town manager Francine Romalia.
Here.
Town clerk assistant Sammy Brown is present. Town's planning consultant Caitlin Forbes.
Present.
Thank you.
And do we do the pledge when we do the PZB?
We have been.
Okay, we'll do the pledge.
Same thing. Pledge of the.
We just do the line. We have to say something. I am to the public, which stands foundation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair. The town attorney Ben Saber is also present.
Thank you. All right, it looks like on our agenda item, we have the one item. With the presentation of the paddock RV resort on Sea Road. Could we get introductions by the presenters, please?
You want to go ahead and introduce the two of yourselves and then I'll give a brief project introduction if that's okay with the board.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight from the Bove Company out of Ponte Beja, Florida. We've been working on the project for about a year. My name is Gabriel Bove, Gabe. My nephew Joe Bove, who's also a professional engineer and has been thoroughly involved in the project and the design and engineering.
Got one over here, you can keep that one. Okay, so I'm going to just give a brief introduction and then save the majority of the time for their team to go through all the boards and the plans with you. I think they also have some plan sets on the table if the board members wanted to come down and look at anything more in particular. But overall, the project that they are presenting today has been in the works for, I think you said that we've been working at for just under a year now. So the applicant has just under fifty acres of property of interest off of Sea Road, north of Southern Boulevard. Currently, the property is vacant and they have provided to the town for consideration. Five different applications at this point, they're kind of all moved together, hand in hand to provide or ultimately accommodate the project that they're proposing tonight, which is the paddock RV resort. So those applications that would eventually come before you include two pieces relating to your comprehensive plan. One being a revision to the text of the future land use element to create a new land use district to accommodate the project. As well as a map amendment to change their land use designation to that newly created district. The reason that they need this is because our comprehensive plan is silent as to RV resorts. So you need language that regulates and establishes that type of use in the comp plan. Corresponding with that at the zoning level, it would be two similar applications, a text amendment to the adopted Unified Land Development Code. To establish a new zoning district, which would implement the new land use category. So you have two text pieces and then along with that, you have a map amendment to rezone the property to the newly created zoning district. So you have a map and a text at the comp plan and a map and a text amendment at the zoning level. And then there's also the site plan that completes the package. So with that, I am going to let the Bove team give you all the information that they're prepared to share with you tonight. And then I think they're looking forward to some fruitful discussion, some input on their plans as they stand today. And I think also there will be a public comment period as well. However, the board would like to order that in terms of the board and public comment, I'll leave that up to you.
Terrific. We thank you, we want to make it as informal, feel free to ask questions along the way. So as Caitlin said, we've been working on this for some time now and we're very excited about it. We, we think the, I think you know a little bit about it, but why don't we just kind of give you the high level first. The project is located off of Southern Boulevard and Sea Road. We have, as Caitlin said, just under fifty acres, about forty-seven acres. We see the commercial developing along Southern. And we know the backstop is Collecting Canal and we see our project as a step down in intensity. We are not commercial, we are stepping down to a rural recreation zoning. We think it's an ideal location for this. Sea Road does not go across Collecting Canal, so we have direct access into the project and exit back out. We see the paddock as, and that is a name only, we're not going to have any livestock. It's completely a high-end recreational resort. We'll show you some of the renderings and pictures of the vista that we're creating. In addition to the location of it, we are putting a huge buffer around the perimeter. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. We have a equestrian trail, if you will, a, a trail that can be used for hiking, for biking and for horses. In addition, we feel like the location works well as it buffers the, the surrounding areas. We've talked to all the neighbors around the community as well, around our adjacent property and have their support and we'll share a little bit more about that. One of the things that we wanted to do is, is be, be solid in what we're doing. And that's why we have put forward our plans and all the details. So we're asking for, as Caitlin pointed out, the land use, the zoning and also the site plan. So over the last year, we have complete design and engineering plans. So we are not going to come back here and change it after we get approval. It's going to be based specifically on our site plan. So everything is a hundred percent straightforward, you know exactly what we're going to do and how we're going to execute. Joe, I'll let you talk a little bit about some of the zoning and, and some of the boards here.
Yeah, sure, so as, as Gabe pointed out, what you see on the right, and I believe you guys do have packets in front of you too. So if you flip to this, this again shows the step-down zoning and the less, lesser intensity that the project provides and the transition overall. From the access directly off of Southern and then in to the back on, into Sea Road and the property. And then more, more into the detail on the land use and the zoning side. We've gotten a lot of questions and we recently, as you may know, had a neighborhood outreach meeting about a week ago. And plan to do another one at the property in a couple of weeks. But, so we've been seeking input from everyone in the town. We actually have a boards specifically on some of those concerns that we have solutions and, and details about. How we answer those and, and more on that later. But on the, again, back to the land use and zoning side, as Gabe pointed out, we've submitted a full application and Caitlin did a great job of explaining. Exactly, you know, the five documents and applications that we have in there. But the, the, the basis of it all is that the land use is a rural recreation. And the zoning is RV. And it is consistent in, one, with the site plan and therefore it cannot be any other use. It cannot be a trailer park, it cannot be apartments, it can't be commercial. And there's no way around that. So I think that's kind of first and foremost, the purpose of this message here. And one, again, that we've gotten a lot of questions on.
So a couple of things that we're going to do also to protect that. We have, as I mentioned, a beltway around the property that consists of, in some areas, eighty-foot buffer. And on other areas, it's, it's down to twenty-five. But we're going to dedicate that eight acres to the town, so it would always be there in perpetuity and always be the buffer. We have some pictures of the Greenway Trail that will be shared by the community, not just by our property. We think it provides excellent connectivity to the rest of the Greenway Trail and the town. And we want to be good neighbors. We want to invite the public into our community on a, on a, on, from time to time. If there's a community event, we'd like to host and sponsor that. We're going to have various themes throughout the year, whether that's a holiday party, we'd like to interact with the rest of the community. And we hope that our residents or our guests, if you are our guest, will be able to. Take advantage of some of the things that are here in the town, whether that's taking some horseback lessons or going to the mushroom farm or whatever venues around town. We want them to feel part of the community. The Greenway Trail is something that we think acts as a, a nice buffer. And, and starts to set up the ecosystem that we're trying to preserve. We have done an exhaustive amount of engineering and homework and work. We've done a detailed survey of the property, including the environmental and the trees. We are, we are removing trees, but we're replacing trees. So our total tree count is going to match what we're taking down. Our mitigation will be a hundred percent on-site, we'll end up leaving the site sixty percent green. So, and the buffer around this site, if we look over here, will be such that you will never be able to see inside the park. Be on all four sides. I think this photo here gives you an idea of what the buffer will look like. So there won't be any visibility into the park from outside. And then the architecture that we're proposing fits with the Rural Vista Guidelines. We have metal roofs, we have more of a farmhouse kind of look. Not that you're going to see that, but we wanted to be in compliance with what the ideals were that the town has, has talked about over the years. So we're very excited about the architecture.
Yeah, and, and to just say a little bit more about, you know, all that we've been working on in the design and, and reviewing. Everything that's been put forth for the town for a number of years, the Rural Vista and the Master MREG Plan. You know, just to kind of go back to this for a second. We do plan to attend the MREG meeting, or excuse me, the Reg Tag meeting in a couple of weeks. But as you kind of look and zoom way out around the town. The property that we're talking about just off Sea Road is a connection to how the overall MREG overlay was planned, so.
Joe? I don't know if everyone on the councilor in the audience knows what you're talking about with MREG. But it was the Master Trails Program that was put together in two thousand and nine.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that, Francine.
You're welcome.
And so what this will be doing is adding eight point seven five acres of accessible public trail area out of the forty-seven. For the purposes of the trail.
Any questions about what we're doing with the trail or what we've shared so far? So a couple, a couple of other things that we want to make, point out as well. The utilities for the project will be a hundred percent city water. And we will have our own sanitary, so there is no wells and there's no septic. The storm water system has been designed in accordance with the design standards for the state of Florida. We've submitted our plans, our engineering to the Water Management District. We have about six acres of retention ponds on-site. All of the storm water will be treated on-site before it's discharged in accordance with the guidelines. So we're a hundred percent self-contained, where we. We also have done a complete study on the light levels. We have the photometrics done, we're happy to show you those, but the light level will be down low. Our, our highest building is probably, I don't know, eighteen to twenty feet. And the RVs are going to probably be at like sixteen feet and the light levels are all below that level. So there won't be any haze. We have a, a very strict guidelines, guidelines and rules and regulations for operating the park. As you can imagine, our guests want the freedom to have quiet at night and we will be enforcing that. We have a property manager that specializes just in RV communities throughout, throughout the country. And we have strict guidelines and so the noise levels will be extremely low because our guests want that as well. So between light levels and the noise and our utilities, we, we want to be good citizens and, and protect the environment.
Sure.
So you've said many times that you're really excited about the project. Thank you. My first question to you is what excites you about this project?
So in our marketing, there's a huge demand for Royal, well, RV, RV demand. There's ten million RVs in the country right now. If you looked at the state of Florida, you would see probably ten times as many parks on the west coast as on the east coast. So the demand is definitely here. We know that the Wellington activities with all of the horse equestrian activities and polo is big and we recognize that. But there's also demand for families that want to come visit their families here and they want to bring their, their rigs here. And so we thought this might be an ideal location. And the more we study it, the more, and we've had a, we did a, we commissioned a very exhaustive market study and the demand is clearly here. So we think that it's like a hospitality function, just like a hotel, only you're bringing your own bed with you. So we think it works really well here and we want to do it well. We don't want to disrupt the community, we don't want additional density. So these are guests, they don't have a permanent address, so they're coming to, to lodge here and then move on. And so that's what we see as a, a way of providing, you know, additional benefit, we hope, to the community. That's, that's our dream.
Okay, so it's a business.
It is a business, for sure. And we're, we're, there's no question about that.
Okay, and then you say there's no residents, I, I did read that there's a six-month limit to residing in this location or as a guest. What constitutes leaving the facility and getting to re-establish a new six months?
So we, we still have to kind of work out some of those details, but we would see you being gone at least a month before you would return. And we think, we think that's going to be, well, let me back up a couple more steps. The average, the average cost of our stay is probably going to be in the twenty-five-hundred to three thousand dollars a month. So the, the equestrian worker is probably in the eight fifty to a thousand dollars a month. So we're not going to take away from that, that particular market, right? We're a whole different type of market than, than the workers that are helping out with the equestrian activities here. So most of our, most of our guests are going to be here with their other friends for a long weekend or a couple of weeks and then they move on. That's just the nature of our clientele.
That's how you envision it, but there's no guarantee of that.
No, but again, we'll have, again, we're going to limit it by the six months and, and most of these folks kind of move on.
And, and in that twenty-five-hundred a month, what does that include?
So if, we'll be happy to show you some of our plans, but we have a full recreation resort. So we have two clubhouses that constitute almost fifteen thousand square feet. We have pickleball courts, we have fitness center, we have a swimming pool, we have locked activities. So there's a lot of stuff that's going on that we're promoting for their enjoyment, recreation.
Includes hook-up to electricity grid.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, water sewer.
Water sewer, does that suit any internet?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
So really, that's very low for this area for a month to be all-inclusive of all of that.
Well, it's depending on the, there, there's three different seasons in the RV industry. There's the shoulder season, the summer season and then the season, if you will. So the, and depending on the, you know, the, the part of the country you're in, down in Florida, of course, it's the better months of the year that are the season. When the weather's ideal, so December to April. And then, so it, it'll fluctuate. Our, our peak in season is higher. You know, thirty, so there, we have, again, we show you on the drawings, but.
And it depends what site you get to, so we have different types of sites.
Yeah, there's.
They're different amenitized, right?
There's four different, yeah, four different sites, the, more of a premium that has a cabana and summer kitchen, a little bit more amenity. About the same width, but I think it is about maybe two feet wider.
Just the amount of pavers and privacy that you have and the view and the type of site that it is, whether it's a pull-in or backup. And so we have, we have, as Joe pointed out, we have different seasons. If you look at the overall occupancy of our park, we've run the numbers at about sixty percent occupied.
Is there a limit to how many people can occupy one site or, or stay in one RV or?
Great question, but most, most are going to have two people.
Again, assumption, I, I see that's how you envision that, my question is, is there anything to regulate that?
Well, we will have, I think, I think they'll be limited to their family size, so it'll be four or five. But we will have, we have adequate parking for some guests if you have, if you're visiting. Say you're coming down from Pennsylvania and you've got family that lives here, they can come to the park and visit with you that day and they'll be leaving that night. And we have parking for, for all of that.
All right, so is there a plan there to, to actually regulate that or keep?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yes, yes.
We, we have drafted rules and regulations, we have several documents that have been submitted to staff, to the town. And it's very exhaustive of a list that we can share a copy. And of course, that'll be finalized and then the property management company is very recognized in the industry that we've been working with. And the management group that will be on the property tending to any of the guests' needs and, and strict, you know.
Just like any other hospitality.
Yeah, just like a resort would be.
So to that end then, the six-month requirement or the minimize, minimal, maintaining a six-month maximum residential stay, we'll call it. Does that apply to however many people come in the RV? Like, let's say twelve people come in an RV or two.
Yeah.
Come in an RV, are all six people, I'm sorry, are all twelve people or all two people, are they able to be the ones that stay for the full six months?
Yeah, I mean, I think you would, it's, it may be by site, right? So if you came and you had five children or whatever, that would be your site and then you would leave after six months.
Are pets welcome?
Pets are welcome.
What kind of pets?
We'll have some regulations on that and be dogs and primarily, you know, not, 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 not exotics, but something, you know. But no, no livestock, we're not, we don't have any paddock provisions. We're showing a paddock, but it's just for theme. We're going to actually use it to store some golf courts and then some of our maintenance equipment.
Do you have any onsite employees?
Yes, well, so we will have a full-time manager and then we'll have all the maintenance personnel that won't be there, won't necessarily live there, but will be working there.
Is the full-time manager the same as the property manager that you've been talking about or is that someone different?
There'd be a property management company at a senior level and then we'll have onsite people as well.
You speak of the public trail or the trail that's welcome to be neighborly and invite everybody in? Is there parking for that?
That's a great question, we've offered that and that's really up to the town is what they'd like to do. So Sea Road actually terminates, as I said, at the canal. And there's quite a bit of right-of-way. And one of the issues that we've learned that the town needs is additional pond impoundment area. So there's an opportunity to create another retention pond, not for our use, we're taking care of our stuff on-site. But we could, at the end of the road, create a place for some parking and we think it'd be ideal. If someone wants to bring their, their trailer with their horse and have a place to drop it, we think it'd be ideal.
So the neighbors to come there, is there a way to get to that without having to go all the way around to Sea Road? I'm sorry, to Southern and enter that way?
In terms of vehicular access, the only way is Sea Road. If you were coming by trail, then you could connect, as Joe pointed out, on that red trail. And you could then loop around our entire project.
There is a trail that exists right next to this location, is that accurate?
Yeah, it does.
Are you not familiar with the Solar Sports Trail? Yeah, and the bridge that connects there is.
This is right at the corner.
Like, what would you say, a hundred and fifty feet?
I'm, I'm familiar.
From the bridge, so yes, it does, you can, you can access it from the north side, which would be on the south side of Collecting Canal. And then down Sea Road in the right-of-way and then Collective Solar Sports. But what this would add is probably three thousand more feet of trail. Because the total loop around the property is, is like five thousand eight hundred. So it would be in from Sea Road down the southern side and then down the entire eastern side, which you currently can't access.
So are the same restrictions going to be maintained in that area? If people decide that they don't like the noise ordinance there in your area and so they just get on the trail and walk here. Is there any, going to be any additional enforcement by you all for your guests that have overstepped your recreational?
Yeah, I think we, we definitely want to maintain controls and make it quiet for everybody's enjoyment and be the same, right? We, that's, that's very important to us, yes.
And to, again, I, I hear that, you know, and I know maybe that's your intention, but.
I, and I, quite frankly, I, I, I think that the community will probably enjoy it as much as our residents because. I doubt that many of ours will be bringing horses. So I think, I think ours is probably going to be more hiking and maybe some bicycle trails, but I think that's going to be the extent of it.
Do the residents have access to all of the MNAs? The pickleball, I mean, the pickleball?
Our residents do, yes.
Oh, oh, Locksahatchee Grove Town Resident?
No.
Just your?
Correct.
People.
Correct, from an insurance standpoint, liability standpoint, we're, we're not opening this up to everybody. In fact, we have, it's a gated community.
Um, we have more questions, but I don't want to monopolize, you guys have some.
Great questions, we love it.
Want to be able to see some of this and maybe four more questions? Because I know you guys have more information to show. So along her lines, enough questions, you guys have any other questions? Okay, okay, why not, is that okay, Jackie, to hold up?
I, I will keep asking, because I've got a lot of questions, but I.
These are great, we, we love this.
So this map here, it shows commercial going all the way to Collecting Canal, but I don't think those three parcels are.
Is that, is that the Solar Sports? Okay, we may have that incorrect. Thank you for the correction, we'll, we'll make that clear, okay. Okay, we'll, we'll make that correct. Gotcha, it's not, okay, okay, thank you.
Do you have any other RV parks or not RV parks, but RV resorts that you, that you guys are doing now?
We don't, we don't, we, we, we've, we're in the real estate development business, been doing it for twenty-five years throughout the state of Florida. This is our first RV resort and therefore we partnered with a team that has specializes in this. But we're very attuned to developing amenitized communities and so it's a natural fit for us.
Can you tell us where the closest similar to this is to here?
Um, in terms of something, something that we've done?
No, 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 something at any, is there an RV resort in Naples or in Hope Sound or some, what's the closest one to here?
There's several even in this local area.
If you look at the one up at Indian Town Road, I think that one is in Jupiter is, is somewhat, we're somewhat patterned after that.
Jupiter Park out there on the west?
Yes, off, off of Indian Town Road.
So that's, so that's pretty similar to what you're.
Is that a gated?
Yes. And they have a, they have a big clubhouse as well.
You know the name of it?
Get that for you.
We have it in our. We have it on, do you have, you have those, we've left it on the car, I guess, we have our comp sheets.
That, that's all I have right now.
All right, would you guys like to go down and look at some of the maps and plans they've got down here and then maybe ask some more questions? What's the name of that?
Yeah, Palm Beach Motor Court.
Palm Beach Motor Courts. How many?
So while. So, um, while you're. We're happy to answer these questions. We love that. We love the workshop approach. We have with, through Caitlin's office and through the rest of the staff, we have um. Been back and forth numerous times on our drawings, right? We've had four different reviews. And so we're delighted to get your input and ideas so we can continue to have the plans evolve.
Alright, what I would suggest is that we take a look at anything on the table that is not able to be set up on the easels. And then get some public, uh, are you guys putting in for public comment? Francine, are they putting in for?
Yes, they may put in for public.
Okay, are there seats provided for them to take care of that?
Yes, there are.
You can let, you can let Sammy know, um, or Ken there on the end. Ken is, doesn't look like he's very busy down there, so. So, um, I would suggest anybody that would like to take a look, come up and look at these maps now. And then we'll get some more public input and more questions from here.
Perfect.
And excuse me, just, just for the record and as a reminder, if all the board members can make sure not to have any conversations amongst yourself. As you're looking at these maps, any conversations should be on the record and the microphones.
Would you mind if I?
So this is, uh, this is the office.
That's the office, right, so.
And you guys provide a laundry?
And the idea there is.
Can you say slot?
Correct. And so some of the resorts have either a dual room or they have. You know, maybe a. Five area. So that's kind of the, that's the purpose of that section. And then the remainder of the resorts were utilized. Which the. Larger clubhouse building. Kind of an important thing. A lot of people. There'll be, you know, people that come and stay. And it's gonna, you know, around the supermarket and something like that. I mean, that is, you know, fair point. There's no way of stopping somebody going to grocery store. But there will be a service. Room inside the clubhouse building that you can buy any essentials. You know, what it's kind of like. So, so that'll help. And there are also these snacks. And in addition to that, uh, at that activity. Uh, an area for food trucks that, um. We hope to get local business, local food trucks to come in and set up whenever, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's. That could be something. Yes, um, because. Yeah, sure.
The first building in the.
So, so we come in off of somewhere. If, if you haven't checked in yet, then you say. That's right. So all of this is public.
Yeah, I saw that. That's in our handout.
Okay.
So, yeah. That's all in your handout. We don't have this.
Okay, uh, everybody had a chance, I believe, to take a look, um, and ask individual questions at the tables. How many, Sammy, how many public comments do we have?
Madam Chair, we have two public comments.
Alright, um, is the podium microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, would you like to have them come up?
Christie Coleman. The first public comment is Christie Coleman.
I mean, it was posted online for everybody to see a week ago, so I'm sure everybody knows it. Does it matter?
Christie Coleman.
I have been to multiple workshops for this, as they well know. They're both very nice people. They also know I don't want them here. Um, first of all, and I think Todd already corrected this, I couldn't completely hear because of the noise in the back. But commercial does not go to collecting. It goes to tangerine. So let's just start right there. I am not the one property next to it. I'm not the adjacent. I'm one over. I did hear him say that he has the support of the neigh, the neighbors and he corrected it to adjacent, probably because he knows I'm sitting back there. And he knows he does not have my support. As we all probably are aware, but I wanna point out, the adjacent neighbor is a realtor involved in the sale. So, yeah, I'm sure she supports it, cause she stands to make a bunch of money off of it. Um, I can appreciate that they've tried to make it pretty. I can appreciate that they have tried to make it fit in with our town. But our town has that property to be, I believe, subdivided no more than one house per five acre parcel. And I don't understand why we are entertaining changing that. Because we have people who bought the property that now wanna sell it for something it wasn't meant for. Um, I'm pretty sure I can't sell my property to somebody that wants to put a townhouse on it, just because I could make more money for it that way. I don't think it fits in. I think it's going to invite a lot of traffic that we don't need or want. Um, I can imagine they might try to keep the noise down, but if you live in Jacksonville, you're probably not gonna hear them. Don't know how well your property manager is going to be able to go off property if they go, as Ms. Clifton pointed out. That if they come off the property and start creating problems or being noisy or whatever, I don't even know what authority your property manager would have to handle that. I can tell you from experience, the police absolutely will not patrol the canal bank or any of those trails or any of those easements. So it's gonna be a free for all. Um, I know this is from what's there already. And you're talking about two hundred and eighty or however many slips you have times. I guess you're assuming people are only families of four or five by your comment, but that's still a lot of people. Um, I can appreciate you guys have put work into it. I can appreciate that people wanna sell their property. But I think maybe what should also be appreciated is this town was incorporated to protect what we have. And while Southern is the commercial corridor, we already have a lot of stuff that got passed through that nobody really cared enough to protect. And it would be very nice if now people tried to protect what's left. And I don't think changing zoning and land use and whatever other technicalities you called it, because I'm not gonna pretend to know it. To something that it's not meant to be, that's not protecting anything. That's just letting somebody make money off their property that, for whatever reason. According to the owner's Facebook post, he has a right to do anything he wants with his property. Um, and I just don't think that's true. And I would really appreciate if the board. And at some point, the council would listen to that and understand that it's doing a real disservice to not only the reason we incorporated. But also to the people who actually make this their home, that don't look at it as a place to go and vacation for a month because they have money to burn. Thank you.
Thank you. Sammy, who else do we have speaking?
Madam Chair, the next public comment is Sue Cassiopa.
Uh, Sue Cassiopa, one, three, five, nine, three citrus. Uh, I have sort of two things to say about this, or maybe I have three. Uh, I in general support some of what Christie says. Uh, I know this town was incorporated. I have read it. It's a while back. And told by a number of people that it was to keep the, the status of our town in its, the same environment. And there was a lot of fear here that the county of Palm Beach would permit the type of uses that we're looking at. And they incorporated this town to prevent that. We actually pay more taxes and stuff because we are a town. And there was a reason for it. Okay, cause we could just unincorporate and let Palm Beach County approve all these things. So clearly, I'm not tremendously in favor of this because of those reasons. Okay, so on the other side, since I have no way of controlling whether it's approved or not. Uh, on the other way, there's two things that, uh, I'd say against it. Having to do with if you want to approve the zoning change, which I don't see why we should. Uh, one is. Their business, which is how we all make money. So it's, it's, that's not a criticism. That's just the way it is. Uh, and you do seem to know what you're doing and seem to be very enthused about what you're doing. So if everything worked right, it would be great. But one of the things that I'd be concerned about is this seems like a very expensive project. And I think somebody here should know how much this is gonna cost. And also ensure that the funds are there to complete it. Because I have seen, since I'm a lot older than these people, I have seen businesses fail in the middle, which happens no matter what. And then whatever development is left over is now a disaster and everybody's scrambling and now there's a mess. And this again is a town of mostly just a community. I mean, it's small. People like their rural nature, rural nature. The other thing is, again, because of the business aspect, you people are very enthused and. What I can tell from looking at everything, it's well-designed. It looks good. It would be a wonderful place to go and visit. But if things don't go as well or the manager doesn't do as well as he should, like was mentioned before. Uh, cause we've seen those things happen with management companies and with the actual manager. And if things don't be as, if not as profitable as they were, there's going to be calls to change things. Because now you can't keep the business going. For whatever reason, there's a downturn. All sorts of things happen in the world. And there's nothing to prevent, to protect the town from that. Okay, so that, that's a major part of my thing. There was something else. Ah, all the questions that Jackie's been asking, a number of the questions have involved. Um, things that, uh, you've said, we're gonna do this and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do this. But none of those are required. So yes, you're only supposed to, you only expect two to six people in a camper or. RV, what do we call them today? I'm old, so I'm. Uh, and, but that doesn't have to happen. I mean, I've watched some of these people, these horse people who pile, and I'm a horse person, so it's not like I'm against horse people. Uh, that pile masses amounts of their, their help in very small places. And so they could do that here. They may decide it's worth their money to do it. And it's not like those people are bad. It's just there's lots of them doing lots of things. Okay, it's, it's not the individual. It's the fact that there's a lot of them and the intent of your construction. Clearly is not for that to happen. But if it does happen, then something else is going on. So my general concerns are about your rules. We're only supposed to do this. You're not supposed to go over here. How do you ever enforce them? And how do we as a town even try to get them enforced? Cause once we approve it and it's going, we don't have any control over what you're doing. You're a business. You're there to make money. So I don't know how it's going to work in our favor as a town. Okay, I don't know what the tax structure is on it. If the taxes would be better with bunches of homes, I don't know the answer. I'm not, you know, somebody else has to look at that. Uh, we're designed as a community. And I personally would prefer to see homes as opposed to this type of transient thing. But, you know, those are my comments about it. That, that's why I have a problem. If this community stayed exactly the way I describe it and was financially good for the town, whoever looks at those things. It's really nice. But I can't predict what's going forward and neither can you. And this town is gonna still be here in ten years if things go bad. And we'll have to deal with it then with our taxes. So that's.
Great questions. May we respond?
Certainly, it's a workshop.
We do have one more public comment.
Yep, we can go ahead and respond and then I will take the next one. Thank you.
Okay, so I think they were really wonderful questions. Um, number one, I apologize if I said that we have support. I meant the adjacent. Excuse me for that. And it's in addition to more than just the, the broker involved. The remaining properties that touch us. We have that little map, Joe, and I, I don't know if we do. But they, they all know exactly what we're doing. Um, and it's not, it's more than just Phyllis. We have, there's about four different. And it's not, it's more than just Phyllis. We have, there's about four different property owners that touch our property. Um, to your question about rules in our investment, we are a business. We're not going to let this thing go unruly because we would lose. So we will have tight controls. It's, it's just n- natural for us to do that. In terms of our ability to build and finish, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, never failed on a project and nor would this ever happen. We have a bank and our own private equity in. And so the funds are a hundred percent upfront before we start. It's a large investment, and we're talking more than forty million dollars on this project between the land and the infrastructure. There's a lot of homework, a lot of study, a lot of risk that's looked at from everybody before shovel goes in the ground. So we're a hundred percent behind that. We're going to finish. We want to run a very tight ship. We want to be good neighbors. Sixty-five years old, I've done a lot of these, my name's on this, and it's going to be right. This is a project that we all want to be proud of. We want to be part of your community. We don't want to be an outcast. We want to be part of it. We want to be a vibrant piece of it. And that's our intent. We love the input. We're happy to adjust, to modify, to listen. We want to make it better. There are some, we think, advantages that we haven't really chatted about tonight. We, we, in terms of tax revenue to the town, you asked that question. Between our ad valorem taxes and an additional, I'm gonna call it a bed tax, there'll be about two hundred thousand dollars worth of net revenue that comes to the town. Not to Palm Beach County, but to the town. Now, that's not not huge in terms of your overall budget, but it's something. And in terms of the controls of the town, uh, the the policing of it, if you will, we think most of that will be self-policed, but we also at the K O A that's down the street and very, very small number of incidents. We think we found two or three that were really non-issue that happened inside a whole year. So I think sometimes everybody thinks it's going to be wild and crazy. That's not the kind of park we're going to have. It's going to be controlled. In terms of letting too many people in a, an RV, we wouldn't allow that. We're not going to let ten people stay in an RV. That's just not happening. We, we wouldn't allow that. In fact, I think we have, one of our rules is if you're going to stay longer than a few months, we're actually doing a credit check on you, checking out who you are. So we're, we're very keen on running a very tight ship as for our best interest. We have too much of an investment to let that go awry. Okay, hopefully answered the, some of the questions.
Thank you.
Real quick, the K O A that you're referencing is at the one at the end?
Lion, lion, yes. Yes.
Okay.
We, we, and we, we see ourselves being entirely different than that, but that's been here, I mean, it's tired, right? It's some twenty-five or thirty years old from what we know.
Yeah, if I, if I gotta point out one more thing too, because a lot of what Gabe touched on, we also, and some of the questions that came about tonight, as I said, from public outreach and, and, you know, throughout the course of last couple of months, we responded to a lot of those. And so the ones, just a kind of flag that we didn't touch in full is, um, th- that the resort, a lot of people are looking at it all and saying that it's not environmentally, environmentally friendly. Well, the facts of it are that the resort is nearly sixty percent green. It's shown on this board and some of those images. Um, and then, uh, the big thing is that we are not taking drinking water from the aquifer, which is the difference between what the resort would be versus if it were homes. And I know that all of the homes here in, in the town are, I mean, a majority, I think, it's not a percentage, but a large amount, if not all of them, do pull from the aquifer and then all of the septic, uh, tanks have waste of, and, um, you'll get into the groundwater system as well. So if, eh, that's not what we're doing here and, and it's, it will all connect to county utilities for both water and sewer. And there'd be sewer connections to each RV site. And, and not to get too far off topic, but you know, something that, that would mean is if any local people in the community had an RV and they wanted to use one of those sites to dump the waste from the tank, um, at the resort, then we could facilitate that. And, I mean, I mean, so that, that's, um, we see that as, as a big environmentally important fact. Um, and then, and then not to mention too, that we've touched on before, but the trees. Um, an alternative, you know, eh, eh, everyone have heard has said clearing in the name of ag. I mean, it is, it is the case. I mean, there are rules in place where you can clear cut properties for pastures and grazing and that's been done on this property, not when it was under our control, but that could continue and, and there could be no trees on, on the property. You know, and, and even the collecting canal buffer that's there could be dwindled back even more. I know that uh, we've been told and I've seen photos of what it was in its day, well, we're wanting to restore that and make it even better so that you can't see in, and so that it is, it, it, it's very visually appealing and gives a lot of of the green and the, the hedge and the vegetation from the north side of the property. Um, and then not to mention all of the trees that we're proposing to put back. There are rigorous requirements for tree mitigation. And it was done intentionally, that's in the code because of the rural nature of Locksahatchee Groves and the vision of keeping things green and rural. And that is exactly what our plans adhere to. We are proposing over two thousand trees. To be planted, uh, there are over five hundred of those are live oaks. Thirteen, eleven hundred or sable palms or thirteen hundred, I mean, over a thousand palm trees. If you look at some of the plans, and you're welcome to come up here afterwards, but eh, the drawings and you look at each of the individual sites, there's at least a tree or two or sometimes three on each of the sites, which is good for the overall property and for the resort guests because when you go in, it's your own little oasis for each of these sites. There's a, a large, um, hedge down the, down the side of each, um, each site. I, I mean, so you're, you're in your private area as a resort guest. But not to mention too, that's, that wouldn't even be visible to anybody on the surrounding areas. So, I mean, that's just to touch kind of on the environmental piece. You know, nobody likes change. That's just a human nature. Uh, we get it. Nobody wants to, you know, have it, you know, in their backyard or whatever you kind of want to say, but the facts of it are there. The benefits to the town financially to some doesn't really seem to matter, the annual contribution that it would bring, but that is real. The, the traffic directly off of, of Southern. We've been looking at, um, you, you know, traffic patterns and how i- it, it would affect, some people have said, as I was saying, uh, before, some people say that it would affect, um, the grocery store, that it would overcrowd your Publix down here on B Road or you, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts or the Aldi's or whatever i- is there and on site of, of the property. And, and so I guess to start, I mean, we're not saying that people aren't going to go use the Publix, that's just not, that's not accurate. I mean, we wouldn't say that people aren't going to, but at the same time, they're on, on the resort property, um, we have a quick service or grab and go market.
Small camp store.
A small camp store for the essentials that would cut down on some of that and some non-perishables. And then, um, a food truck court, which we, we want to see local food trucks come and be able to use those, uh, and, um, go into the slots and, and have the resort guests come and, and buy food. And, and that's something too that, that we could open up for certain holidays or events to residents here and not just to, to the resort folks that, you know, people could come in and go and access the food trucks. So y- you know, impact to some of those local businesses, it's not, it's not like it's not going to happen, but eh, last thing and, and I'll wrap up, but, you know, al- also the impact to the businesses is a positive thing too, not it's, there's a lot of, as I just said, a lot of plant material, a lot of landscaping that is going to need to be purchased. And there are, we've already spoken with some of the local, the nurseries here in Locksahatchee Groves. That all of that could be purchased from, there's going to be needs for, for labor force, um, to, to build it and for maintenance of, uh, once it's in place, uh, that creates jobs. So just trying to touch on as much as I can, but.
Can you tell we're passionate about it?
Anything?
A lot of time.
Anything else?
Nope, sorry, that, that is it.
Caitlin, I do have a question. Uh, I, in our little packets, we didn't get a site plan. Um, or current survey of the property, it was there, I'm sure there's a survey that's been done on the property.
Yes. We're happy to get.
Is that anything that you can give us in a smaller size?
I can certainly, uh, distribute the survey that's been prepared by the applicant via email um, to all of the board members, so you can have a copy of that. But they did provide a survey as well as a tree survey.
Okay, and then, um, Sammy, you sent us something also, was that the site plan? It was that, but that doesn't have a site plan in it. Okay.
You can do the site plan as well.
Yeah, I know.
But before you move on to the public comment, the reason we held this meeting is because the applicant wanted to move forward to the P C B. But Caitlin and our staff have not completed the review of the site plan or the applications, that's why.
I would just like to see that information because it's out here, other than the survey.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm giving information for the record saying why you don't have it in there because it's changing and it changes based on review comments and also input that they get along the way. So we will distribute it. Like Caitlin said, I just want you all to know that it's not the final one for review.
Okay, and we have one more public comment, I believe, that was put in?
Yes, we do. Madam Chair, the next public comment is Ms. Karen Plant.
Thank you.
Karen Plant, one four zero three seven Collecting Canal Road. Um, one of my main concerns is, um, voting. We didn't want assisted living facility with too many beds because we were worried about voting rights of people that didn't have a stake in our community. And if you look up state statutes, they're going to let people stay for six months on these sites. And it says legal residence mobile for a person to be with a non-traditional abode, mo- motorhome, et cetera, intends a present in the county and intends for the county to be their residence. Acceptable address includes a P O box at a mail place. They could be living there and set up a P O box. And you're talking about two hundred and seventy-five approximate sites, and you're talking about how many people per site. Up four, five, I don't know how many of legal age, it could be six hundred to a thousand people, we don't know. They could be registering to vote. It probably won't be that much, but I have the same problem that we had with assisted living facility, which is why I think they preferred the hotel. But I think this is going to be a problem for our community with a bunch of people living there. And we made sure residents could only have two RVs on their site. It, it's such a coincidence that this is coming forward with over two hundred and seventy sites and you're going to limit residents that have five, ten acres to how many RVs they can have. Also, if you look at the property on the corner, Okeechobee and Folsom, they got a variance and got to change and put commercial in there. And what happened to that property? They walked away and they want to sell it for more. Nothing. It's still sitting there with giant real estate signs up on the fence. Um, I, I just think that this is not a good idea. I don't think it's well thought. I think it's too dense for our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Madam Chair, we have another public comment from Sue Cap.
Sue Cassiopa, one three five nine three citrus. Um, again, since I can't say whether this is going to pass or not, I would just like to say that if somebody was thinking about passing it, uh, there's been a number of assurances about how things are going to be managed on the property. And I don't know how this is done, I'm not an attorney, but it would be good if the town had some control if the promises made at meetings like this were not carried through. Promises about managing people, those type of things that are going to adversely affect the people in this town. And I don't know how that's done, if it's done by contractual obligations when papers are signed. But it, it seems like very often when something gets done of this sort and then things go not the way we'd like it, that we lose control. And I don't know how that needs, that could be done or even if it can be done, but it just seems like a good idea to somehow package it together if somebody decides to approve such a thing.
Okay.
May we respond?
Thank you, certainly.
Um, granted, a great question, and, and the, the, I think the way we can do that is we would have conditions to our approval. Based on the approval, we would do this, this and this, and that would be all in the, the agreement that we would have with, with, with the town. Yeah, and, and, and cer- yeah, and I, again, I think, I think at the heart of it is we're business people, we want to do it right. We, we, we don't want it to harm us. So tight controls, we're on the same page. We're evenly yoked on that. We don't want things out of control. But, but it, the, but it will always be an RV park because that's what it's owned for. If you wanted to change it, you'd have to start all the way at ground zero again. And so we have too much of a large investment that we would ever let it fail. It's just, it's, it's, we're going to do what's, what it takes to make it right. Um, and in terms of the voting thing, we can't control, and we can't take away people's right to vote. That's not our, that's not, uh, up to us. But that's no different than allowing other people inside of the town of Locksahatchee Groves. I think there's a potential, I think there's like three thousand residents. If everybody had an RV on their property, that could be three thousand potential people plus whoever lives in there that could go vote. So we can't control that either. We, uh, the nature of our residents is going to be more short-term stay. They're, they're not, we're not, we're not going after the worker that's going to be here for six months. That's not, that's not the clientele we're seeking. So it's a, we, we don't think that's going to be an issue at all.
Thank you. Jackie, I know you had more questions. Todd, you've got more. I see your head nodding. Brent, questions? All right. Why don't we start with Todd?
So the majority of our parcels out here in Locksahatchee Groves have the ability to accommodate an RV. How many people do you expect to use your RV park that are part of the community where it's family and whatnot?
I'm not following, I'm not following your question.
The majority of parcels in Locksahatchee Groves can accommodate an RV. So how many landowners or residents in Locksahatchee Groves are going to have somebody that's going to use your facility? Or do you expect that to be a very small amount?
How many, how many guests will stay at our park that are visiting guests here in Locksahatchee Groves? Is that the question? I don't know the answer to that. I, I mean, I, I think we would look at a broader market. We would look at all of South Florida, all of Palm Beach, right? We're looking at probably people that would come visit within a probably about a twenty to twenty-five mile radius.
So, so then that leaves my next question. So when you have a Publix or an Aldi or a Dunkin' Donuts, people in the community able to use those amenities, right? You know, if they go shopping. What is this going to bring to the average resident in Locksahatchee Groves? Because if they're not using it as an RV park, what, what is it, what is it?
What's the benefit to Locksahatchee Groves?
Exactly, besides the two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I thi- I think there's that revenue. I think it's, I think it's the furtherance of the ambiance of what happens in the equestrian Wellington community and what the spinoffs of that are to the community. Right? I mean, it's, 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 it's during that season that helps embellish that stay and whatever happens here in the town and the spinoffs of all of that. I mean, it's, 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 it's during that season that helps embellish that stay and whatever happens here in the town and the spinoffs of all of that. As Joe pointed out, we will have, um, we're probably going to have 15 to 20, um, positions between maintenance and service and all of that. And there'll be subcontracting for maintenance of the facility, so I think there'll be some local jobs and some, uh, hopefully positive impacts to the community in terms of job placement. But, yeah, just like a hotel, I mean, yeah, I think on, on occasion, there'll be, you know, need coming directly from the town. But it won't be solely for the town, we couldn't say that.
Um, so, I, I heard a rumor that, and, and I mean, you and I had discussed this ex parte in another meeting. Um, about municipal water lines for some of the surrounding residents, and I've heard that might be coming to fruition or it's a possibility.
Yes.
And then one of the things that is a big concern right now is the traffic at B and Southern. And I had mentioned to you about getting a traffic light at C and Southern, if you were to bring something like that, right? That would be a benefit to the community because it helps with that horrific mess we have at B and Southern.
Great questions and great comments, so in terms of extension of utilities, we're certainly amenable to that. We're going to be bringing in, um, the potable water off of Southern, and we'd be happy to extend it up to Canal. The sanitary, we're going to have a big lift station, and so there's possibility that, you know, that could be tied into as well, happy to explore those, um, think that would be great. Um, in terms of the traffic, and that, we had a whole engineering study done. And we're happy to participate in a potential light at C Road. We reached out to, through our traffic engineer to the DOT. And they said in time, when the warrants on the road are there, they're amenable to it. That there is enough distance between lights that another signal could be, could go in there. In terms of impact on B Road right now, our plan is to not allow traffic to go down, once tangerine is extended, to go, go through solar sports. We don't want any RVs going through there, so they would have to exit to Southern Boulevard. Go north and make a turn at the light, and if they can't make the turn there, then they're going to go left and go through Wellington and find their way back to Southern. So, um, we're, we're happy to help and participate, and that would be one of our conditions to approval, happy to participate. And, um, the, the, the light that would ultimately come at C Road.
Did they give you any indication as to how many, would the traffic count would need to be at Sou- at C and Southern to warrant a light? And, and what, and what percentage would you be to that? I mean, would you, are you only going to be 10% of what that would be, because right now there's basically no traffic.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're probably a pretty small component of that, but if that, if the brown holdings piece would go commercial there, or whatever that impact would be. And whatever solar sports would eventually be, they would probably be the larger component than what we would be. But, um, and until those happen and they're in place, the DOT doesn't move forward, but that was very clear from them. But they did say that they would be amenable to it.
Thank you. Brent, would you like to weigh in before Jackie jumps in with her list?
She did, actually, the one I was thinking, so, and what is actually bringing you into the town?
Good question.
Okay, Jackie.
Thank you, just to follow up on that, because I'm not sure I understand. How are those places going to impact C Road when what you've stated is the only way in and out of this gated community is that access point? So, that should be the only traffic at that place, right?
C Road, um, off of C Road, there, there's a tie-in to solar sports eventually, that's what we're talking about.
As, as it stands today, the only access-
There is none.
And for all we know, it might stay like that, I think there's some trigger for the property next door that it would be built, I don't, I don't know exactly what that is. But we're saying in time, if that were to come through in the corner of, of C and where the solar sports property is. That broad enough commercial, whatever, you know, that may be in that corner, and it does connect. Then that's when the signal opportunity would come into play, because now you have the connection through C to B. And then the benefit in all of that is it would take cars off of B Road where all of the issues are, or, or, you know, the, the traffic congestion. And they would then come tangerine up to the light at C Road.
So, so I think in time, this is-
Confused because there's no throughway right now.
That is correct, that is, we're just talking about in the future, yes, ma'am.
And then that light, then, the access that you're anticipating would be, you can turn left on C Road onto Southern. Um, right would be to Publix, you can turn left, so you don't have to come up that, is that what you're anticipating?
So, you, right now, you can't make a left turn, no, there, so you have to, you would turn right, have to come up here, and then go all the way through Wellington and all the way around and back. If you can't make a U-turn on Southern.
Correct.
Because of the rig's too big.
So, my question is, is that what you're expecting?
Yes.
To happen, would it would go through?
Yes.
So, you could make a left turn from C Road.
Eventually, eventually, if there's a traffic light, then you make the left-hand turn there, that's exactly right, yes, ma'am.
Do you anticipate having any stationary in place RVs that people can rent, or are all of the-
So, on, on our site plan, we actually showed like 10 or 12 spaces, and we're considering that, that might be something that we do. Because we know that some people want to try it out and see how they like it, and we know they're popular, so we may have some of our own that we would have on those sites.
And on those, um, is that also the six-month resident required?
No, 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 no permanence, that's correct.
But they can stay up to six months renting that?
Yes.
At 2,500 all-inclusive?
Probably more than that, yes.
No mailboxes.
No, no mail, no mail.
So, yeah.
And we're happy to adjust that, we, we don't-
Sorry, that I didn't mean to, there's a UPS store right away, right around the corner where you can get a, um, post office.
We can't, again, we, we can't regulate that.
I understand, that's why I'm asking questions, um, and then the other-
Sorry, we, yeah, we, we, we're doing everything we possibly can to prevent that, we know that's a big, you know, problem for people that, that's why it's all rental sites are not. They'll never be fee simple. Kind of, of, uh, fee simple. I mean, there's no mailboxes, there's everything we're, in our power, we can do.
But it, to me, it's inconsistent to say, we're trying to prevent that, but yet you're willing to rent the same spot for six months. I mean, that absolutely invites someone to stay for season in one spot for six months. If I have, um, work, uh, workers, or if I have, I don't know, I mean, family that, you know, because I'm working here and I want them to stay. Then it makes sense to rent that for six months and stay, the intent is to be a resident here or, or stay for the six months. So, I hear what you're saying, I mean, I'm listening, I want the answer to this. You envision this just to be like the, uh, upscale resort and the long weekend for families, but the way you're establishing it and setting it up, it's not that. It's, it absolutely is for six-month stays.
We, we can, we can go back and evaluate the six-month stay, we can reduce that, that's not our intent.
I hear you.
And you want us to put some words to it or commitment to it, we'll, we'll, we'll go back and study that. We're going, we're going to go back and we're going to check in with our property manager and try to get an understanding what that market looks like and how many people that looks like. My, my, my guess is it's a very small piece, but it's a fair question.
Thank you, and then the, um, on that, and then I'm, I'm wrapping up, on that, um, the RVs that come in. Um, are they, do you verify, are they owned, are they rented, it doesn't matter to you as long as it's full?
So, we, we also have a standard that they're going to be less than, I think, seven years old. And so, they have to submit photos that they're in Class A kind of shape. So, yes, we're, we're going to control all of that.
And I read, um, that you said, I read somewhere, um, and if I'm wrong, please, you know, feel free to correct me. But I read somewhere that anyone that, um, is expected to stay 30 days or over, um, would get the background check. When you spoke earlier, you said a few months, we do a credit check, so-
Thank you, 30, 30, whatever we said, I'm sorry, yeah, we, it's 30, 30 days.
And that would just be for the renter?
The RV owner, yes.
RV owner, or the person that's renting the site?
Yes.
Okay, and last question for tonight, um, are you going, and maybe this hasn't worked out yet. Are people allowed to rent for successive years, like I want to come in and I want to get my site for the next six years and go ahead and?
Um, gosh, I don't, we haven't thought that one through enough, but, you know, we'd, we'd love for you to come back, I don't think we would commit to a rate.
Well, again, and it is a business, and I, and, and nobody's knocking that, right, we all, we-
We want to repeat business, sure.
But you, you made an interesting comment to, to Ms. Sue, and she made the comment, well, what happens in five years? And you're like, it's an RV park, that's all it's going to be, because that's what it's zoned for, but guess what it's not zoned for today? So, we're here because you want to change it to that, so what happens in five years when someone wants to change it again from that? So, um, you know-
That's, that's no different than any other request, right, I mean, that's why you have a planning and zoning board, right?
But this is also-
We're, but we're, we're, you know, we're committed and we're locked down to whatever those rules are, and that's what we're going to adhere to.
Well, I thank you very much for all the information and questions from me, I know I have a lot.
They were great questions, really, it's been a great board session, it's informed us, thank you.
I do have a question, uh, regarding your, you've stated a bed tax several times, this board may recall that, uh, when we were discussing the hotel. Um, we were told we couldn't assess a bed tax on the hotel, can, uh, staff answer to that?
And we, we wouldn't, I use that term loosely, we would-
It's not, it's not unique to you, I, it's a staff question.
We worked with our attorneys on this, and we looked at a couple of different ways that the developers could do what they're suggesting they'd like to do. And I think that it was determined that anyone can give the town a donation every year. And they, um, as part of their condition of development, um, have decided that they were going to do. An amount equivalent to what they would pay in a bed tax. That is my understanding, um, but it is not a bed tax, it is a donation.
So, to clarify, the town still cannot assess a bed tax?
The town may not assess a bed tax, the town may accept a donation.
I also recall, and this was not with this board, but I believe it was town council, there was discussion of a, um, commercial zoning district along, uh, Southern Boulevard. What's the status of that, do you know?
Um, so it's not necessarily a commercial zoning district, what it is, is something that was included in the original, um, comp plan. And I think maybe even the neighborhood plan, um, is something created by Florida statutes called it, called a business improvement district. Also known as a neighborhood improvement district, they're one in the same. Um, and, um, it is not a zoning district, it is, um-
Semantics, what's, what's the status of it?
The status of it is, is that we are working with Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and we have a couple of dates set up with them. Um, to go ahead and do some listening sessions, um, with the folks that own property on the Southern Corridor. Um, but nothing is finalized yet, we have looked at the breakdown of all the property, um, in the Southern Corridor. Um, and as you probably realize, most of it is non-conforming. Um, so, um, we are trying to look at how we address the concerns of the non-conforming residential. Um, versus the undeveloped land.
Okay, and then, uh, you mentioned you've done an extensive traffic study, I believe, what, what is the traffic impact, you know? Off the top of your head, car trips a day?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I would probably answer that incorrectly, but we can send you the report.
So, yeah, that, Caitlin, that would be another report, it would be appreciated. And then, do you have a, a projected return on investment in this project?
Yeah.
I guess my question is, you, you're investing and you've got 40 million in capital outlay, are you looking at a 10-year return on investment? You know, five? Okay, yeah. Certainly, I understand, uh, any other questions, concerns, outbursts, tearing of hair, gnashing of teeth, no? No?
Caitlin, is it possible for, when you look at that traffic count, to see what solar sports is going to add to C Road? And then maybe we can find out what the warrant is from FDOT for a traffic light there to see if we're going to be at 10% or maybe at 90%? And we don't need, I don't necessarily need that.
I mean, we haven't had much luck with removing stripes, so I'm, you know-
What's that?
Curious, stripes on the left turn lane at B Road with FDOT, so I'm curious to see that too, good question.
I can send you, um, the Bovet team traffic study as well as the, um, traffic impact analysis that was done for the hotel. Um, and then I can also, uh, coordinate with Jim to see if there's some additional traffic studies beyond what the hotel produced, just for the overall master plan site that we can share.
And then what, what DOT is looking for to warrant a traffic light there?
We, we pressers for that, I mean, we, yeah, we asked in every possible way, they wouldn't give us an answer.
What is that all about?
Okay, well, I think that pretty much concludes, staff, do you have any other input that you'd like to add before we, or the applicant, anything to add, or you wrap this up?
They've been a pleasure to work with, and they have answered every single question we have come up with, and we have come up with a great deal of them. And, um, it is further my understanding, although they haven't mentioned it, that they may also be doing further public outreach at their actual site. And if those dates are available, it would be good to say for anybody watching the meeting or wishes to think about this issue and ask more questions.
Saturday, March 1st.
Could you use your microphone? Thank you, if it's still working.
That's the date, it's the next public outreach neighborhood meeting, however you want to kind of refer to it, is on March 1st at the property. Which, um, you know, as you know now, is C Road and, uh, south of Tangerine, so it'll, it'll be there.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin, you were going to say something?
Yeah, we, we'll get, um, information out at public notices and, you know, um, we could put it on the website or however we can coordinate that. But we'll make sure everybody is aware.
Thanks, Joe, I just wanted to summarize the off-site improvements that the applicant has proffered and coordinated with staff on. Um, because I know there was a question from the board on kind of what the applicant is bringing to the town. So, just to reiterate from staff's perspective, um, and feel free to add, because I just want to end with a summary. Um, C Road would be improved, um, in part by the Bovet team to the point of Tangerine, um, where that connects or intersects with C Road. The solar sports team is required to improve C Road south of Tangerine to, um, the point of Southern Boulevard. So that eventually the full length of C Road would be improved between the two parties. Um, also, the Bovet team has committed to the drainage impoundment improvements and also providing, um, some parking spaces for the trail if the town desires. Um, of course, there's the perimeter, um, Equestrian Trail that would be provided, um, for and dedicated to the town. Um, in the form that the, uh, attorneys find acceptable, whether that's an easement, a true dedication, um, so I think we're working through that. Um, there was also some improvements about, um, the roundabout within B Road. Um, also the traffic signal at C Road here, depending on warrants, that may take a little longer, right? Because you have to have certain traffic counts, unfortunately, usually they're looking for a certain number of accidents to happen, things like that. Um, also, there's been discussion about, um, some of the clubhouse amenities being available for certain times, um, for rent for, um, town events. Um, and there's a couple other, um, you know, things like the franchise fee, um, being, how do we call it, a donation, um, to the town annually. And a couple other smaller, um, components as well, so I just wanted to summarize that, because, you know, there was a, a question about some of the, um, some of the benefits to the town.
I do think that one obvious benefit to the town hasn't been mentioned in this meeting, but it has been mentioned in other meetings, and it's the annual net-
Sorry, she's sitting down, I have a question for her.
Go ahead.
So, a couple things, we learned, um, at the meeting last night regarding the potential improvements on Okeechobee with the TPA grant. Uh, was it Project Zero, what's the zero thing with the sheriff?
Vision Zero.
Vision Zero. Um, there might be a, an ability to put some pressure on them, since you mentioned accidents? Cause they want zero fatalities and everything else, so. Uh, this drainage, um, empowerment that's been mentioned a couple times, uh, who's that drainage for?
I'm gonna let the engineers speak to that. I know they've worked with the town engineer quite a bit.
Yeah, so in the, in the process of, um, of trying to determine? What does benefit the town and what can we offer to help with, you know, whatever it may be? That was something that came up, uh, and Public Works? Mentioned there's some flooding i- issues in the area, and so what a drainage empowerment is? Is basically it's a bathtub. I mean, it's an, an area that is dug that? Would have some sort of berm or control on it, and the canal could then, since it's regulated out to, um? Uh, I think Lake Okeechobee or, you know, there's a series of locks and canals in the area, and, and there's only so much that can be let out at a time? Rather than it, it's, uh, queuing up in the? Uh, canals among, along the town, some of that can be put in this? Bathtub, if you will, or this pond. So alleviates some of the water in the canal and goes into there, and it's solely? For the canal regulation. It would not be for any of the on-site, like?
I appreciate that explanation. Back to staff, though, wha- what is this impoundment for?
The impoundment is because we, and if you'd like to hear from Caitlin, that's fine as well, but? The impound, impoundment is because the town has one pump station? And the south end of the town is as much as five feet lower than the north end of the town. There is no way to quickly get the waters out of the south end of the town, particularly in Citrus and? Tangerine area. Furthermore, we have to run our pumps fairly constantly to get water to the north. If we have an opportunity that we can have storage that helps us with managing floods? Or that we can have storage from which we can pump? Then we don't have a situation where we exceed the amount of withdrawals that we can have from South Florida Water Management District. We do exceed from time to time our withdrawals, and running the pump? Regularly to get water to the north is a fairly costly proposition, so? In fact, as we go forward and look at our water control plan, which is totally separate from this project? And as we go forward and we look at result, additional and future resilient Florida grants, one we're putting in this year? For, um, tangerine and citrus in that area, because we do have significant flooding there? Um, this would actually be a strong partnership for us. It's not really all that much different? Than what we were kinda hoping to do with, um, Groves at Town Center, when we wanted to work with them in partnership? And have some storage on their property.
Okay, uh, that, that answers part of my question with the resilient Florida grant, um, but when you talk about the? Five-foot difference, are you talking about canal depth?
Talking about elevation of the properties. If you measure? Our properties in the north end of town, some of those properties have an elevation of twenty-one feet? And if you come here to the south end of town, we've got these engineers and developers that can probably tell you tons of different? Elevations, but we have some as low as fourteen and a half feet. Um, our required elevation when you need to do an FDA is seventeen point six.
Familiar with the NAVD?
I understand, so I'm telling you that, that is seventeen point six feet? And our properties that are south of Collecting Canal are not near seventeen point six feet. They're more like?
Yeah, some of our residents this evening are on the south end.
That is absolutely correct, and so our goal is to be able to go ahead and alleviate the flooding. One way to alleviate flooding is storage. Another way to alleviate some of the flooding is re-engineering, so it can go to the north where it's needed. Um, and so we are looking at all those things.
It's amazing.
Bless you. So the, so the use of a storage area or an impoundment area would certainly assist us? You know, in, um, designing some drainage solution for the south end of town.
Okay, thank you. Does that bring up any other questions? From the board? All right, and, uh, I think that kinda wraps it up, and then we've got, uh? Agenda item here for confirming next date, meeting date?
Well, before you move on, I did wanna answer the one thing I was starting to say, if you don't mind. And that is the, um, obvious item that has not been discussed is the taxable value? And what it will bring to the town annually, um? Because I believe that number net of any related cost is something along the lines of eighty thousand dollars a year?
That's correct.
Right, and you didn't mention that, and I think that if you're gonna talk about what it brings to the town? That would be important. Okay. Okay, I think that was important to get on the record.
May I follow up? The donate, the donation, um, or the contribution, um? That's not, I mean, that can be revoked at any time, correct? That's not anything that we can regulate. We can accept the town by, we, I mean, the town can accept, but we can't? Require, then it's not a donation.
I assume you can do something like a pilot, right? Paying a little tax or something?
They can do, they can, they can make an arrangement with us. We can accept a donation? And if, just like any pledge of a donation, it's a contractual relationship.
So at some point, though, sometimes, and I, and who knows, cause we don't see the future, and we're talking a lot about what-ifs here, um, sometimes in business? The, the time comes that you wanna sell the business. It makes the most financial sense for the business to sell. Um, and so?
Okay.
Right. Adam Chair, at this time, we do not have a meeting date to confirm, but the Office of the Town Clerk will circle back with the committee members.
Yes, with the election and the council changing and seating of the new?
Yep.
The new board.
Absolutely.
Great. Uh, thank you so much for coming and presenting tonight. Thank you to the public for attending. Thank you to staff? Um, to answering all our questions. Have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion to adjourn in a second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Good night.